Welcome. I'm going to call this September 3rd meeting of the Vance County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first order will be invocation by Pastor Ron Cava. Hmm?
Can you hear me?
Okay.
It looks to me like you all need prayer tonight.
Make it a good one.
We're standing in need.
Oh, look out and pray.
Ah, let's join in prayer. Magnificent God, Creator of life and goodness, health and strength, God of our individual lives and our corporate life. We come to you tonight to ask you to guide our leaders to make decisions that are good and just, righteous and life-giving that will contribute to the flourishing of every member of our community. You're the source of wisdom so much more important than knowledge. Wisdom to take our knowledge and use it in the best ways possible. Wisdom to know when to say yes, when to say no, when to listen, when to speak. Grant them wisdom, oh Lord, in all that they do. And be with this assembly that as neighbors together, we might voice our concerns with reason and respect, with dignity and understanding, and that together we might grow stronger and better together. That we might set the example for other communities that are deeply divided. And we might find a sort of unity that seems elusive in our day. We pray this for our good and for your glory, knowing that all of our religions in the world, with all of our differences, agree on two basic premises. That we're to love you and we're to love our neighbors. And help us to do that in word and in deed. I pray in your name. Amen.
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 I'd like to, um, to keep Commissioner Faines in our prayers. Commissioner Faines lost her sister yesterday. And so my thoughts and prayers with her and her family. So we'll keep her in our prayers. Tonight, public comments, public comments are generally scheduled for a maximum of 30 minutes. Of the names that I can read, it looks like we have 25 people signed up. Eighteen of those people are speaking on taxes. And so if you'd like to take a minute and see if there's some way you can consolidate some of those so that you can have a spokesperson, if people are saying generally the same thing, which would understand the message is probably pretty uniform. If you'd like to do that, we could, that would help with some things. The taxes and then the property values was another issue that came up and that we had multiple speakers on. So if you guys want to just take a minute and see if there's any consolidation you can do, otherwise what we'll do is we'll cut the time back to two minutes per speaker and go from there. So. Is anyone who would like to consolidate? Okay. That being the case, then we'll go ahead and proceed. When you come forward, state your name, your address, and then you'll have two minutes in which to speak. So first, first name signed up is Geraldine Champion. Is that speaker working now in the back? Can you hear me?
Good evening. My name is Geraldine Champion. I'm a city council member that represent one. The city council is the policy-making body of the city, and they're responsible for adopting the budget for establishing policy. Because I only have two minutes, I'm just going to cut to the chase. I came tonight to ask the county commissioners to request something from the county commissioners. Our citizens are facing critical issues, taxes included. And I would, I came to ask the question, when can we all sit down at the table, the city and the county, to talk about these critical issues that our citizens are facing? I look forward to talking to you all. Hopefully I have, I have an answer within the next two weeks. But I'm publicly asking for a meeting with the county and the city. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Geraldine. Next, we have, is Teresa Matthews?
My name is Teresa Matthews at 15445 NC Highway 39 Henderson. Very concerned because our property taxes went from $4,200 up to $7,755. And I just think that's ridiculous and would like to have a meeting with somebody to figure out what we can do.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, one thing what we're going to do tonight, I've asked our county manager to take notes as we go through this. Generally, we do not respond during the, there's no response during the public comments period. But we will try to put together some information and get some information out to the public via our website in the next couple of days based on the questions that are being asked. Next, we have Robin Faulner.
I'm with the lady that just spoke and probably this whole room. This room probably hasn't been this full in how long?
A long time.
So I think our city and our county has a problem. And I think that if they knew that this problem was on the agenda, you couldn't get all the people in here. I have friends that are older people that can't pay this. So what happens then? They're on social security. That's all they get. I have a friend currently that's on social security, single, and she has cancer and dying. But she's got to worry about this big tax bill that she just received, including me. I'm single. So mine went up 1,500 more dollars. So therefore I have to save $350 a month just to pay this. The hike was way too high. Yes, I agree that the tax should have been increased, but not substantially enough that the people can't afford it. And they can't. So therefore, our city and county needs to reconcile this and do something about this for all the people. Can we be? Um, can we be on the agenda next month?
We'll need to look at that.
I mean, if you're on the agenda, I will spread the word. I've spread it this time. It's got, something's got to happen. Thank you.
Next, we have Deborah Hayes.
Deborah Hayes.
Okay.
Oh, I was from Valley Lake Road. And same thing, I'm a single parent with a handicapped child. My mom's taxes went from 12 to 35. Mine went from seven to 12. And just like she says, social security. Probably the same thing. That's what everybody wants, but I handle it.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Next, we have Dottie Crocker.
My name is Dottie Crocker. I live at 100 Rain Tree Lane in Kittrel, North Carolina off Bobbit Road. And I have two questions. I guess they're both questions. And you can, you said they'd be answered later, which I expect. What do my tax dollars pay for in Vance County? What do my dollars pay for? Second thing I have, since I've seen a lot, in fact, my word would be, we are inundated with subsidized income housing. There are more houses and apartment buildings than I have ever seen being built for a income-based tenant. That person cannot pay taxes. They aren't required to pay taxes. So they don't have the problem I have yet. They can live by paying pro-rated or however you guys do it, I don't know, those people that own these apartments and houses, that amount of money. That they pay that money and they don't have to pay this, as I call it, huge amount. I'm proud of what I own and I intend to keep it. But you're making it tough out there. And I would, those two things. And if I'm mistaken, on the subsidized income housing, the low income, whatever they want to call it today, I need to know that too. Because the way I see it, there's a whole lot of it out there. And none, nothing for the person that works and say makes 35 grand a year. They can't afford to buy a house hardly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crocker. Next, we have RW Finch.
Evening. I've been on too sure what I was going to say about this, or how I approach it.
Finch, could you just give us your address, please?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. It's 147 Quick, Quick Lane, Kittrel. I was going to, pretty much tried to repeat what Dottie says. I would like to know exactly what I'm getting for my money. Because I, I alone work for and pay for the product myself. Nobody else can contribute. Daniel, you didn't pay for it. Leo, you didn't pay for it. Sean, you didn't pay for it. Tony, you didn't pay for it. These taxes are absolutely ridiculous. Dublin, and we're not getting no kind of services whatsoever. As far as that's concerned, where I'm living at, we addressed this a few years ago. You don't talk about everything is equal. We still have, we don't say, no kind of broadband service to the internet in that area. Y'all promised it could be open broadband, it's going to be solution. But what the hell y'all do? Y'all stuck it on down on top of Kittrel Water Tower, which is still four or five, six miles from where we live at. You can't, you, somebody's got to justify this kind of break y'all doing here. Y'all just literally raping us. Or pretty much you putting a damn gun to our head and taking, taking our property from us. And it ain't right at all. Y'all will be held accountable. I promise you that.
Next, we have Lisa Baltimore.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Baltimore, 1520 White Farm Lane, Manson, North Carolina. I think most of y'all have been getting emails from me. But I wanted to inform you of the second community meeting by Cypher's Creek Renewables scheduled for tomorrow at Bullocksville Community Center from 5:30 to 7:00. I also want to stress the importance and impervious surfaces. Water does not go through solar panels. Typical examples of impervious surfaces are roads, parking lots, and rooftops. These types of land cover keep the water from soaking into the ground as it would through a natural surface. When it rains, more of it runs off the hardened surfaces, such as solar panels, and at higher velocities, causing erosion and washing pollutants into waterways and into the Car Lake watershed. Just look at what occurred in Essex County, Virginia. I canvassed all of the neighborhood this weekend, and I got red ant bites all over my ankles too. But I spoke to everyone that answered their door, and they got a flyer. Flyer has your names, your phone number, and your email address. Tomorrow, I expect the majority of them are going to be there. I've invited all of y'all to show up. Governor Cooper's executive order number 246 and 292 directs various actions to advance environmental justice in North Carolina. These actions relate to climate change, resilience, clean energy to identify environmental justice. I do believe that this community's environmental justice is being violated by choosing an area of less privilege who will weep no benefit from this project. I did give each of y'all a handout. You can see how close this solar farm is to Bullock Solar. There are four solar farms within seven miles of my residence. Thank you. I'm going to see Frank Slossman right now and talk about this environmental injustice that is occurring.
Next, we have Gary Fletcher.
My name's Gary Fletcher. I live at 128 Shepherd's Way Lane, Manson, North Carolina. I'm here today to talk about my mother's property out on Spring Valley Lake Road. It's come to my attention that it looks like it's, instead of being residential across from her, they're trying to turn it maybe into some, some kind of commercial property. Where they, I don't know what they're going to do out there. I've heard rumors, but I don't really know. But what the whole point I'm here for, I talked to her about it, me and my brother and my sister. And I asked Mama, what does she think? And she, she just told me right out that she, you know, she's in her 90s. She told me, she said, look, son, I just want to have, the last years I got, I'd like to be out here. It's so peaceful and nice. That's the reason I moved out here. And she, she moved out there in 2007. So I, I, I hope y'all will take this into consideration when you vote to make any kind of changes, which we don't want to change. We just want to leave it like it is. And if y'all will, anybody still for the Spring Valley Lake Road would stand up. And these are the people here that, that, that feel the same way I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Next, we have Laura Tallon.
Good evening. I don't want to sound redundant, but I'm just telling what the gentleman.
Did you give us your address, Ms. Tallon?
About, yeah, about the Spring Valley Lake.
Can you give us your address, please?
2020 Spring Valley Lake Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is our second trip here to share our concerns about the possibility of rezoning the Spring Valley Lake Road area to accommodate an event center on our road, which would be similar to Pumpkin Farm in Youngsville. I don't know what the protocol is for not having rezoning done. But if it's rezoned for this event center, the next thing we know, it'll be rezoned for these, uh, uh, monster automobile racing. How would you like to have that in your neighborhood? Well, we would be willing to invite you on a field trip to come and look at what our community is like, not just on paper. Let me give you a crude analogy. If you're out in the ocean, you get a cramp and you start wanting help to rescue you, you got two lifeguards. One who read about how to swim and one that actually had all of the courses to save someone. We want you to save us. We are very, very serious about keeping our community a family-oriented community. I know it would bring additional revenue into the city, but not in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tallon. Next is Penny Stevens.
Hi. We live on 20 Jewel Lane, Henderson, North Carolina, 27537. We got our tax bill. It increased 150%. My one question is, how am I being taxed for a heat pump that is 25 years old, $8,000? How am I being taxed for a deck that is 25 years old, valued at $5,000? How am I being taxed for my bathrooms that are inside my house? Am I really being taxed for my house? I don't understand the, what's going on with the way they're doing the tax values of my home. It's the guy that, whoever you guys sent out or whoever came out to do the appraisals of my house, he really, they really couldn't do measurements because my husband measured everything. And the measurements that's on my tax card, they don't match up to the measurements of what's, the structures outside my home. So we're a little confused of everything that happened. We would like for you guys to reevaluate what, what our tax value has been sent to us. And we really would like to have another meeting on this. And we really think the county needs to reevaluate what you have done to us.
Yeah.
We we, the people of Vance County, cannot afford this. It is no way by January I can pay an extra $1,000 of taxes. We need you guys to help us.
Next, we have Brian Roberts.
I'm Brian Roberts, 664 Taylor's Point Lane. And this is concerned with the taxes and the home value increases. My home increased two and a half times what it was assessed last year. And the taxes went up 96%. We got letters out and a generic email that went to spam folders. I didn't even know anything about the appeal process till two days before it was over with. But I actually got an appeal in. And then we got another email that went to a spam folder from the guys that ever who the county hired to do this appraisal, saying that they lost all the prayer, appeals. So when I called them, they had my name and a different address. It's a big problem. It's a, it's a huge increase and we can't afford it, that's for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Next, we have Laura Parkinson.
My name is Laura Parkinson. I reside at 1560 Tally Road and Road in Henderson. I'm a multiple property owner here in Vance County. I was prepared to come to this meeting armed with numbers. I've decided to come with my heart instead. I started my business as a single mom in low-income apartments, and I built my business from scratch. I prided myself in keeping my rents lower than majority of the landlords, as well as Natalie Butler with Village Square Rentals. We are the few that keep our rents affordable for single-parent families, the elderly, and the disabled. With the new tax increase, I can no longer keep rent affordable. The only people who can afford the high rent are the drug dealers. According to the rules, I can't speak for anyone else, but I can speak on how I feel when my grandparents cry in fear of being kicked out on the street because they can't afford taxes on a home that they've lived in all their life and worked all their life for. On a positive note, the courthouse and sheriff's departments will certainly get more revenue from serving evictions on those who've had to choose between food, medication, heat, or high taxes. Welcome to my hometown, where the cost of living is high, but the drugs are cheap.
Next, we have WA West.
I'm WA West. I live at 2134 South Chavers Road in Kittrel, North Carolina. I've been a lifelong resident of Vance County. My situation is a little different than what you've heard some of the others, although it all points to the very same thing. My, my problem with this tax raise and the amount that it is, is that my, mine went up 200%. I know other people that I've talked to have gone up over 300% of what they were paying in the past. The other thing is, I understand that our budget has $5 million in surplus from the last year's taxes. So why do we need such an expensive increase with $5 million left over in the budget? And then I understand this board is supposed to represent the citizens, represent the county. And you're supposed to be high-upstanding citizens. But there are some members on this board that have delinquent taxes. A matter of fact, the drugs. How could you vote us an increase in taxes when you don't pay your own? I guess because you think you can go up like that because I'm not going to pay mine anyway. But don't bother. There will be an organizational meeting September the 12th at 7 o'clock at 6:03 South Garnet Street, the building across from the American Legion, to put together more numbers and to see what else we, the citizens of the city in Vance County can do. Now, people from the city, and I live in the county, I don't pay city taxes. But my understanding is that your tax bill came with a combination of county and city together. So you have no clue as to who charged you what. You need to look at your city council members. You need to look at your city council members because I believe their raise was higher than what the county raise was and then they were put together. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Tommy Harris.
Hey, everybody. My name's Tommy Harris.
Good. Let, let Ms. Harris speak.
I'm Tommy Harris. I live at 1315 Barker Road. Um, first of all, I don't mind paying my taxes as long as they're fair. Uh, nothing prepared me last week when I opened up my tax bill and saw it. I just sat there and looked at it and I said, how am I gonna come up with this money? Period. The house I live in was built about 1890. It's the typical old farmhouse that sits on field rock. The frame does not pass the days code. The, I, I, it was my wife's great-grandma's house. And I bought it in, back in 80, 1985 and re, and renovated it the best I could. But there's no way, I know what sells houses and I know who buys houses. There's no way I can sell my house for what it's valued at. Nobody wants an old farmhouse that's hard to heat or whatever like that. It's a certain type person that wants that kind of house and those type of people are going away. They want new houses and everything. The other thing that got me upset was, um, I filed for an appeal. I didn't hear anything. I called the tax office, nice person said, we're, we're working on it. I called back later. It should be in the mail a couple of weeks from now. In August, I called again, we're running behind. Last couple of weeks ago, I called the lady, just as nice as she could be. She says, after I, um, I said, I hadn't heard anything. That's when she told me that a lot of the data had been lost to refile it. And I have, and I got this generic email back saying, your case is under review. That's it. I don't know, I, it's just wonder who, it just make, it just baffles me the incompetence up there because I take pride in my house. I try my best to make it look good. I want it to look good. But it, it's almost like I'm being punished for making my house look good when somebody lives up the road in a dump heap, don't have to pay nothing. That's what gets me so upset about it and everything. But like I said, I just think the company that hired the, I don't think, nobody's here from the, uh, reevaluation paper. They need to be here to see how they come up with these numbers. Thank you.
Next, we have, um, Scarlett Bowman.
My name is Scarlett Bowman. Um, I reside at 105 Chris Bowman Lane in Henderson, North Carolina. Very proud of that. Um, my husband and I are property owners here in North Carolina, along with multiple people here in the audience today. I agree and really cannot add any more to anything anybody else here has said because I feel everybody stands on a point of fact. I want to stand here as an advocate for my tenants because I want to give one example. I have one home that was valued at $17,000 tax value. It went up to 138. That tenant is on Section 8 where the government assists her in her rent. With that tax increase, I have had to request a rent increase for that particular home. I can't, I cannot rent the home as charity. I have a bank to pay. I have responsibilities for that home. Section 8, she was paying $600 a month. I asked for a $100 increase to 700. Zillow says I should ask for $891 a month in rent. I'm asking for 700. Section 8 told me to move her out. There were other people that could go in that house. What are we gonna do displacing these elderly fixed-income tenants? They, they can't afford it. Everyone can look on every management site in town and look at the prices of rent. It's like buying a home, if not more expensive, and it should be. We have all of the responsibility, taxes being one of them. Yes, we have to pay taxes, but this is, this is uncalled for. Thank you.
Next, we have Brian Yount.
My name is Brian Yount. I live at 171 Puddlestone Lane, Henderson, North Carolina. According to Vance County Tax Office, my, mine and my wife's property is now worth $500,000.
Congratulations, man. I hope God makes you a million.
Um, I guess it's because I live near that blue thing up there. Um, I don't touch it, but I live near it. Um, wowee wowee. Um, that's an extra $5,000 per year, just in the 10-cent tax raise that you all, that, all the two of you voted for. That's $5,000. It's just me and my wife, no children. So I'm here to ask, what are you gonna do for us? Is the town for dumps is gonna be up in seven days a week? Are the trees on Williamsboro Wayside that y'all let grow back gonna be cut down again? Are you gonna give New Hope a facelift? I don't have kids, but it'd be cool to have a cool school like everybody else. Are you gonna improve Townsford Fire Department? Are you gonna improve Vance County Rescue with this $5,000? Are you gonna bring Vance County public water to my driveway? Cause it's three miles away now, where y'all just decided, oh, we got enough, we'll stop. Um, I bet none of these cost y'all mine because you don't care about us. We're just the ones that pay the bill. We don't want to live around that blue thing and everybody else. Not discounting y'all, sorry. What in the world are you gonna do with it? I mean, y'all voted this 10-cent tax raise on my understanding in 90 seconds. 90 seconds, you charged me and my wife right there. We've lived and worked in Vance County all of our lives. An extra $5,000. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. I had five grand, happy to give it to you, but I wanna know what the heck you gonna do with it? In closing, I'd just like to remind all of you, you can be fired.
Jenny Yount. Melissa Lemon.
Thank you, y'all. Melissa Lemon, I live at 1806 Parker Lane. So I, we got a double whammy, the city did the same thing y'all did. Um, my issue really is a little more specific. On May 28th, a proposed budget was, was given to y'all. And Commissioner Hester, thank you, commended the city manager for the budget being no tax increase. No tax increase.
One minute.
Um, and the, the tax rate, I think, was dropped down to 61.3 cents. So you had a couple, apparently had a couple of budget meetings on 610 and 613, but there are no minutes from those sessions. Maybe y'all don't have to, to do your minutes. The city does minutes for every session, but maybe I didn't have to. So my, not, one, one question was, was 61.3 cents the revenue-neutral rate? If someone could answer that at some point. So then, on June 24th, there were no other meetings about the budget. On June 24th, the budget was proposed with this 10-cent raise. So my question is, where were the discussions about what this 10-cent raise was gonna do to the county? Where was the public made aware between May 28th, when the budget was proposed at 61.3 cents, and June 24th, when it was bumped up to 71.3 cents? Where was the public made aware that this was gonna happen until we got our tax bills? And, and I, and it had to have been discussed somewhere sometime for it to have passed that quickly. And I understand the need for more money. We all need more money. But that was a really big tax hike and I don't think the county thought through what it was gonna do to a lot of these people. And I also wanna thank Commissioner Brummett and Commissioner Hester for voting against it. It shouldn't have been that big of an increase. I understand maybe a little increase, but 10 cents, I think y'all just followed what the city did without really thinking about it.
Just, uh, I believe it's, is it Wanda, Chandler, Burnell, Burnell? Hey, just been addressed, okay. Next, we have Diana Bobbitt.
Everybody else has already addressed all the issues that I'm having. And I stay on 524 Radio Lane. My taxes went from $600 to $1,800. That does not make any kind of sense. Tax value is what my house, we got to earn is $32,000 and then $125,000 is the tax value. And that makes no sense, none.
Okay, this, uh, Floyd Young Gang. Okay. There are a couple here that I can't read. Um, Ms. Becky Cockrell.
I'll pass if I say what I want to say.
I have, um, John Williams. Okay, and then Angela Williams.
Good afternoon, fellows. I reside in Henderson, as well, most y'all know, I'm not a very good speaker, but so my, my concern is the county taxes.
And what gives you a dress?
301 Roberts Avenue. Just on one entity that we own in Vance County, went up $21,000 on one entity. So my question to you is, what is the money used for? Because you, you know, I'm building something out in Bearfond and it sort of pisses me off because I had, I had to get the health department to do something that these taxes are supposed to take care of the health department. And I just had to hire a $10,000 engineer because they wouldn't do it. And this is Vance County. So now I'm at $31,000. So I mean, I think something's gotta be done. I mean, not with taxes, but with also just people in the county doing what it's supposed to do. Thank you.
I'm sorry, there, there are two, two names on this list that were not eligible. Um, if you signed up and I had to call your name, um, is there anyone that needs to speak? That's it signed up?
I ask you if they're booked.
No, sir. If it's not signed up, we, we can't, can't.
Is it named either, you just can't read it?
That's it, okay. All right. That's it for the public comments tonight. I'm sorry.
Did the appeals get lost? Can we get an answer?
There. No, sir. No, sir. Hey, Dan. Yes, John.
Anyone who continues to interrupt the meeting will be escorted out by law enforcement.
Okay. There was a question about some things getting lost, okay? Um, some of the appeals that were done via
It was with Alice, who the county contracts with to do the online process. There was about 150 that were lost. That is correct, the data was lost.
There were online applications that were lost and supposedly letters were sent and you've got an opportunity to, to reproduce that information.
That's correct. As long as you have receipt that you submitted it initially, that's correct.
All right. So, so that, that's, that is okay. All right. Okay. Okay, that's, this is it for the public comment period. As I stated at the beginning of the meeting, um, we will prepare, uh, based on some of the questions and some of the statements that were made tonight, we'll prepare something. We'll have that put, put online hopefully in the next two to three days. Okay. And I thank you guys for being here tonight and we, we appreciate you coming and it'll be on the county website.
I was gonna say, well.
There'll be a public comment period. That's, that's all the public comments for tonight. So we're gonna move on with the agenda. There's a public comment period at every meeting. Okay. We'll, we'll address that in the, the letter. We'll address this in the letter. Okay. All right. Spelled these last words. Did you break your throat? We're gonna take it. You let them out. Yeah, that's hers. She wants it. She wants it. Frank.
Did they?
Ms. Tyler won't let you.
Lois Tyler.
She wants it. We lost. That's good. Now you tell me anytime.
She told me she won't.
If you understand what I was trying to, can you handle that?
All I care about.
You'll be, you'll be.
Thank you.
Mr. Wright, could you close the door for us? Okay. Next on the agenda is Logan Parsons with L K C Engineering.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. So I come before you tonight with this resolution. This resolution is for the appropriation funding that is associated with the Phase 1B project. What we have in, on the May 6th meeting, we adopted a, you adopted a resolution that was presented in front of you for the $3.8 million. That is the state appropriation for this water project. The reason this resolution is coming before you tonight is the funding agency for this project, who is DEQ, Division of Water, Division of Environmental Quality. They changed their administrative fee. They went from 3%. They changed it to 1.5%. So what that did is it changed the dollar amount on the resolution. It increased the amount of funding that goes to Vance County by $60,000. So that, that change has been reflected on this new resolution. So the, they just sent this out within the last couple of weeks. So we got it on this agenda to bring back and for you, in front of you, so we can. What this resolution does is accepts, except formally accepts the money by the board. And then it authorizes your county manager as the entity appropriate person to sign the rest of the paperwork and turn it back in. So here to answer any questions on the resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion? We adopt, you best rather than can. I'm making that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Is any additional discussion or questions? All in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda was supposed to be the Board of Equalization and Review Consent Agenda. That meeting was not properly posted because we had the date. So what we'll do is this will be dealt with at what we published and we'll deal with it at our next meeting.
I do have one request. Do you want to discuss the Board of E N R additional dates of why the board is open right now? Instead of moving it from my report.
The board, I didn't open the Board of E N R because we're not.
Oh, okay. So I can.
We, we do that in your, I think that's in your, your, your report. Correct. Okay. All right. So that item will be skipped. So the next we have our Water District Board. I will open the Water District Board. Who's going to do the interim financing, the 1B RFP? Logan, you doing that?
Okay. So with the assistance of L G C, Local Government Commission, and your bond counsel, who is a representative that we've been working with is Tom Lee Wumble Bond, Wumble Bond Dickerson. Vance County Water District went out and is also part of the Phase 1B project that I mentioned a minute ago. This is the water project in Ketchum. Went out and secured what is required by USDA. So the money, the, the project is funded by USDA primarily. It also has now this appropriation money that's in there. Part of the project is a $1.6 million loan, exact amount 1,672,000. That loan, the way that works is in order for you to access that loan, you are required by USDA to obtain interim financing, which is for the construction portion. So only during construction. Once construction is done, you will close on the interim financing portion. And then all that gets rolled into the USDA permanent loan, which is a 40-year loan. So the interim financing is for short duration. What, what Tom and L G C did is they advertised on your behalf to lenders. And this resolution tonight is the selection. So L G C, your, your bond counsel also reviewed those lenders and this, this resolution tonight is for the Water District to consider accepting a interim financing of 1,672,000. That's the same amount as the USDA loan. With a interim financing source of First Citizens Bank. And an interest rate of 3.99%, which was the best of the financing sources that was provided. So what you'll do is you'll set this, if, if you accept this resolution, L G C's meeting is next week and you're already scheduled to be on L G C's agenda for, for this. They've received all their paperwork. They have everything they need. This is the last step needed for, before L G C will consider Vance County Water District's approval of the loan.
Let me make a motion to approve the loan.
Remove resolution, yes.
Remove the application.
Second it. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So just as a brief update, the EnviroLink building, where the EnviroLink satellite office will move from this building to 305 Young Street here in Henderson, of course, and that's the same building that houses planning code enforcement as well as cooperative extension. And so we'll start communicating that this week.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm hard of hearing.
Sorry.
What date did you say they will be activated, working at that office?
October 7th.
October 7th.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. The month of operations report was included in your packet. Are there any questions on that? Being none, I'll close the Water District Board. Next, our committee report.
Yes, sir. So the Joint Public Safety and Fire Commission had their last meeting on Thursday, August the 15th of 2024 to just, to continue discussions and recommendations from the fire study. And so the only things that really came out of that particular meeting was the fire marshal position has been posted. So it's open until field, but I plan to do interviews towards the end of October, depending on how many applicants I receive. And the second thing that we discussed was fast forwarding calls in the 911 center or creating a pre-alert. And so Vivian feels as if she can do that once she's fully staffed, but it's not a problem to do so. And the last thing that we discussed was having a joint meeting with the city to discuss, I guess, district lines and things of where calls come in. And so we've talked to Terrell and we're going to be scheduling that meeting in October sometime. So that's the only update.
Thank you. Move right on to the county manager's report.
Okay. So the first thing on my, on your agenda, according to county manager's report, is the Fall Litter Sweep Proclamation. So in the spring and fall of each year, the North Carolina Department of Transportation sponsors cleanup campaigns to beautify the roadsides of the state. This year, DOT is sponsoring its Fall Litter Sweep Campaign from September the 14th through September 28th of 2024. Vance County encourages individuals and organizations to support this effort. The recommendation is to approve the proclamation designating September 14th through the 28th, 2024 as Fall Litter Sweep in Vance County.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion that we approve proclamation designating September the 14th through the 28th as Fall Litter Sweep in Vance County.
We have a motion. Second?
I second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So item B under my report is the fireworks permit for Vance County High School. Vance County High School is requesting approval for a fireworks permit for fireworks display at 925 Garrett Road Henderson on September the 13th, 2024 for homecoming night. The display will be handled by a professional pyrotechnics firm with the appropriate credentials and insurance coverage. The county fire marshal has approved the permit subject to board approval. The recommendation is to approve the request from Vance County High School and Zambili Fireworks Manufacturing Company for a permit to discharge fireworks at 925 Garrett Road Henderson on Friday, September 13th, 2024.
I put in a motion to approve the permit for the fireworks for homecoming.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So item C under my report is on your ARPA policies. So the American Rescue Plan Act, in order to be in compliance with ARPA, there are several policies that needed to be created. And so I've worked with staff to create those policies and the county attorney has approved a records retention policy, eligible cost policy, allowable cost policy, civil rights compliance, as well as conflicts of interest policy. And all of those policies are in your agenda packets for approval. So the recommendation is just to approve the recommended ARPA policies to ensure compliance with uniform guidance.
Put in a motion to approve the ARPA policies.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is an amended ARPA grant project ordinance. So the amended, the attached amended ordinance represents revenue replacement for the payroll bonus on March 4th, 2022. Granville Vance Health Department capital projects reimbursements, jail door expenses, and salaries for July 1st, 2021 through June 30th of 2024. So this ordinance, this amended ordinance ensures commitment of ARPA funds by December 31st, 2024 and use of funds by December 31st of 2026. So the recommendation is just to approve the amended ARPA grant project ordinance as presented.
Will we approve the amended ARPA grant project ordinance as presented?
I second it. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. So the next item is Eaton Johnson Gym HVAC contract. The county contracted with Killian Engineering to provide mechanical and electrical design services for the HVAC for the Eaton Johnson School Gymnasium. Killian Engineering Incorporated provided bidding administration and construction administration. So the recommendation is to award the contract to Gupton Services Incorporated in an amount up to $145,044 for replacement of the HVAC unit at the Eaton Johnson Gym. And those funds are already budgeted.
Motion to approve.
Motion. We have a second?
Second.
Got a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. So Carl Lake Substation Soil Evaluation. At your July 1st, 2024 regular meeting, the board approved the recommendation of using a soil consultant to test the soil at the Carl Lake Substation to see if it was suitable for a drain fill. The report from the soil consultant tested, showed, I'm sorry, testing showed that the soils on the lot are considered as poorly drained with soil wetness conditions within 12 inches from the land surface. And other areas have soil fill and/or have been distributed with current building and parking area. The soils on the property are currently unsuitable for a regular type of septic system or an alternative system permitted by the county health department. So given the soil conditions on this property, the only potential system to consider may be a pre-treatment surface drip, surface drip septic system. However, the site will need to be amended with clean soil fill. Additional field work and site testing will need to be completed to see if it's even feasible as this permit is issued by the State Division of Water Resources and not the Health Department. So the recommendation is to give staff direction on keeping the system as is for an annual cost of $4,000 to $7,000 annually or continue with getting costs for a pre-treatment, pre-treatment surface drip septic system, which would probably be very costly for the county if we decided to move forward. Just don't know what that number looks like yet.
To me, that's something that probably we ought to look at in next year's budget.
Okay.
And so spend some time and maybe find out what potential cost might be.
Okay.
And but in the meantime, we, we do what we're doing.
Okay.
Anybody else got any? Okay. There's no action required on that.
And we can skip the employee fund day because we're going to look at changing the date for that. So we can just take that off of my, off of my report. Opiate settlement funds, the annual meeting requirement, each county in North Carolina is required by the executed M O A to hold an annual meeting specifically with its municipalities to explain the M O A, review monies being received and go over the approved use of funding. And so the recommendation is to approve an informational meeting for September 16th, 2024 at 4:00 P. M. So it would replace our work session essentially, so we can have our annual meeting.
Make a motion, we approve an informational meeting for September the 16th at 4:00 P. M.
Got a motion. I second it. A second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Okay.
So where would the meeting be held?
It'll be here.
It'll be here. Yes, ma'am.
In this room.
Yeah. And we'll publish it and I'll do a flyer and create it as we can get it out. And the last thing on my report is Board of E N R meeting. So three dates are currently scheduled for the Board of E N R, but there is a need for several more days per Vance evaluation. All appeals must be heard by December 31st of 2024. I would like to schedule at least 10 additional contingent days just to have them on the schedule. And so these meetings should begin at 1:00 P. M. So you all can utilize most of the day. And so you see the potential dates listed. So if we can just come up with at least 10 days, that would be great.
When do you need these days, ma'am?
So if you can, uh, maybe by Friday? If y'all want to get with me and figure out what, what days are best.
By this Friday?
Mm-hmm. So we can go ahead and publish. Make sure we publish the dates. Y'all need more time to consider? Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the additional 10 days for Board of Equalization and Review dates as recommended by the county manager.
Okay. Right. So what we need to do though, they, she's got about 20 days.
Yeah, it's a lot.
By Friday, we need to.
Come up with 10.
So we, we don't need to really take any action until we know what those dates are.
Mm-hmm. Till I know, yeah. Then we can schedule.
Okay.
They want to hold off.
So just if everybody would, I mean, you got, you know, everybody's got meetings. We'll start, we'll plan on those meetings being at 1:00. So anything from 1:00 to 5:00, if you, if you have conflict, if you could let her know on those dates and then we can proceed from there.
I mean, it would be nice, but it's, Carolyn can't, well, what you want to do like a morning?
1:00 would be what I would propose.
Well, I made a motion that we approved it with the understanding that we go ahead and approve it even though we have not designated the specific dates yet. So I can withdraw the motion. We can do it at a later date or we can just go ahead and approve.
If you can withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So everybody, please get, get in touch by Friday and then we'll schedule dates from there.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Okay. Good evening. So the Cooperative Extension Department has, has the opportunity to receive some grants from the Triangle North Healthcare Grant. So I'm asking for approval for acceptance of the grant funds in the amount of $9,826.56.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve grant funds.
We have a motion and a second to approve Budget Amendment Number 1. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed? Budget Number 1 is passed. Next.
Okay. So approval for the, in last fiscal year, 2324, the board had approved that the fire department get $44,750 for some, to replace some air packs that were outdated. So those funds were allotted to them 2324. Of course, by the time the ordering came, we're in this fiscal year. So this is for approval to transfer those funds to this fiscal year to purchase those air packs, X3 Pros for the fire department.
Make a motion that we approve the funds that we've already prior extended to, so that we can move it up to the new budget year.
Okay. We have a motion. I second it. And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So Budget Amendment Number 3. Approval to carryover proceeds received from the North Carolina Department of Justice for unauthorized substances excise taxes. for unauthorized substances excise taxes to purchase ballistic vests for the sheriff's office to replace outdated vests. The receipt of these funds date back from February of twenty twenty two through June of twenty twenty four.
What's the pleasure of the board?
We can bring these to approve. I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, I? Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Budget amendment number four. So asking for approval to increase the fire department's budget by twenty five thousand dollars to pay for vehicle maintenance on, uh, one of their fire trucks.
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
I second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, I? Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Budget amendment number five, so approval for acceptance of grant from Franklin Grants Event Smart Start Incorporated for parenting program. So this grant will be on a reimbursement basis for the Cooperative Extension, uh, Department.
I'd be willing to reimburse it.
This is federal pro- federal monies, is that correct?
Yes.
So we're receiving federal monies and, and those monies will then be, they use that. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I put in a motion to approve it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, I? Opposed? Motion carries. It's all the budget amendments.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have our consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, I? Opposed? Motion carries. No other business to come before the board entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We're done. Thank y'all.